Okay, we should be um live, I'm just gonna make sure we uh check the stream itself, got it up here so you can hear me. There we go, yeah. Uh one of them is I've set it to a lower latency, which means that there's less of a delay um between uh me saying something and it coming on on the stream. So we can actually so there's that allows for better um um better interaction. So uh hello everyone, welcome to this first history. Um revision study livestream. Uh I've done two politics ones now, they've both been very good, I've enjoyed them um very much, we've gone through a lot of questions. So I thought we'd do it for history. And as uh most of you know, um I put up a poll um last week. Asking which history modules um you'd want me to um discuss first. Cause the problem with politics is, well, the good thing about politics. Is that no matter really what kind of student you are, AQA, edexcel, um it doesn't really matter, you're all gonna be studying the same thing. Effectively, you're all gonna be studying basically the same subjects. But with history, especially with AQA, there's like twenty different modules. Everyone studies a different module, so I wanted to know which ones were the most popular. And the ones that were most popular were Tudors. And Tsarist and Communist Russia and Revolution dictatorship, followed closely by um British Empire, which we'll do an another time. So what I've done is I've got two questions here, okay? We're gonna spend half an hour on each question. And what we're gonna do is um we're gonna go do Tudors first, as we can see here. And we're also then gonna go and do a Russia question, but it's gonna be a Russia question that um you could be asked if you were doing either of the two Russia modules. So if you're studying Tsarist and Communist Russia, you could get asked this question. Or if you were studying Revolution dictatorship, you can s- get asked this question. So we sort of get the best of both worlds. So let's start with the first question. And I've decided to pick a question that wasn't intentionally. Um too easy, because I I I have the feeling that sometimes when it comes to Tudors, um people can just go for the easy questions by looking at Henry the Seventh, for example. So we're gonna do a Henry the Eighth question. And the question itself is, uh the main aim of foreign policy in the years fifteen twenty nine. Uh sorry, fifteen oh nine to fifteen twenty nine was to achieve peace in Europe. Now, obviously you can stick at the end of this. Assess the validity of this view. So assess um assess the validity, the validity. Of this view. Let me just zoom in a little bit more. Of this view. Or on the other hand, if you wanted to, if you're doing uh uh the AS, the year twelve, you could say explain why you agree or disagree. But they effectively mean the same thing. So what are the points that we're gonna be looking at here? So the first thing we should do is always um deconstruct the question. Always go through the question and see the kind of things that it's asking. That's why I've underlined fifteen oh nine to fifteen twenty nine. Always make sure you know the time period that you're being asked. Because if you're asked about Henry the Eighth's foreign policy. In general, then you could go all the way from fifteen oh nine to fifteen forty seven. But that's not what we're being asked, we're being asked about a very specific. Um the early year, uh fuller, the early years of Henry the Eighth's foreign policy. So we have to think about things that this doesn't include just as much as things that it does include, okay? And then the point of this is, what were the aims of Henry the Eighth's foreign policy? Okay, that's the question that we're gonna be asked. And the discussion is gonna be, on the one hand, the main aim of the foreign policy for Henry the Eighth. Was to achieve peace in Europe, and we can use bits of evidence to support that. And then on the other hand, it wasn't, okay? And that's why we're gonna start with the first side of the argument, which was that it was, okay? So we're gonna put the main aim, the main. Aim was peace in Europe. Big capitalize this, was peace, peace in Europe. Okay. So, what kind of evidence can we start off with? What kind of pieces of evidence can we start to look at? Well. If anybody wants to um, you know, put any evidence in the chat if they want to as as this goes on. If there's anything you think I've missed that's particularly important, you know, some piece of historical information or some kind of explanation, then also put it in the chat. You know, I'm not, I'm not the the pariah of of all of history, I might uh miss points every now and then. So if there's anything that anybody needs to, you know, wants to look at, then just let me know. But let's start by looking at a number of points, I've got. I've got five points on this side for this side of the debate, and then I've got one. I've got six, and I've got six on the other side. So we've got, so we've got a lot of pieces of evidence that we can talk about. Now, what's important is that uh we should start to look at um these sort of foreign policy motives. That not just Henry the Eighth, but also his advisors, and specifically uh Thomas Wolsey. Thomas. Thomas Wolsey. So, what did Wolsey want to see um when it came to foreign policy? What did he want to see England um, you know, become on the foreign s- on the foreign scene, specifically within relation to Europe? Well, he wanted to see that England become a force of diplomacy. England, England uh to become. To become a force of diplomacy. Now, that as a first, as a single point, can, you know, start our our first paragraph, our first point, okay? That it was Thomas Wolsey and, you know, by extension, the 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 sort of policy that England was um was um investing in. And that he wanted to see England become a force for diplomacy within Europe, okay? And so therefore, this implies, you know, this suggests that one of the main aims of foreign policy was to achieve peace. Okay, now what evidence can we look at when um when we, when we talk about uh Wolsey's. Um experience in wanting to um ensure peace and become a force for diplomacy, okay? Well, the first thing we should do, and like I said, if anybody has any extra points they want to add, just let me know. And put it in the chat and I'll add it to the, add it to our 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 mind map effectively. So the first thing we can look at is the Treaty of London. Okay, so the Treaty of London. Treaty of London. Now, this was something that took place in fifteen eighteen. And what did the Treaty of London do? Well, the Treaty of London um effectively. Um was a kind of treaty of perpetual peace, just like the ones that we suggested um that we saw with Henry the Seventh. So it was a, it was a general treaty, a general treaty, a general. General treaty. Okay, uh to promote. To promote peace, peace in Europe. A general treaty to promote peace in Europe. That's one way we could describe the Treaty of London of fifteen eighteen. And this, obviously, we can link this back to the question, the question by the way being this one right here. In fact, I'm also gonna um write the question in the chat box just before we start, just in case anyone who comes in doesn't know what the question is. Which would be very um difficult. So the main aim of for English foreign policy. Foreign. Policy in the years fifteen oh nine to fifteen twenty nine. Was to achieve peace in Europe. Uh assess the validity of this view. Okay, so that's the question. I'll do that from now on actually, just to make sure if anybody has uh comes in and I'm zoomed in over here, we don't actually know what the question is. So that's the question. Anyway, back to the the Treaty of London. Okay, so the Treaty of London um established broad protections of peace. You know, across Europe in fifteen eighteen. And so you can suggest that it was Wolsey and um his foreign policy objective. Uh with the Treaty of London um to ensure broad peace across Europe. That's one of the points, okay? Are there any other pieces of evidence we can talk about um for um on this side? Is there anything that anybody would like to add? I'm just wondering if the latency is causing problems with the. With the resolution. I hope the resolution's okay. Anyway, so this is the first point generally, okay? We could also talk about the Treaty of Bruges uh between England and Charles the the Fifth, okay? So we could also talk about the treaty. Treaty of Bruges. And this was between um Henry. Henry and Charles the Fifth. Okay. Now, again, another treaty that implies that we have some kind of peaceful um initiatives between the two, okay? Now, when was this treaty signed? Okay, so this was a treaty between Henry and Charles, as we know. And this was in August, okay, this was in August. Of fifteen twenty one. Fifteen twenty one. So again, within the timeframe of. Um of the, you know, within the timeframe of um the um of the the question that we're being asked. Uh and we've got comment here, yes, the field of cloth and gold, this is gonna be another point that we're gonna raise, and we can talk a lot about the field of cloth and gold. Because effectively, um a lot of your um. A lot of your question, a big chunk of your paragraph, you could spend talking about the field of cloth and gold. So we've got examples of the 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 Treaty of Bruges in um fifteen twenty one. I'm gonna put a little uh, just the Wikipedia page of it here, so we can just talk about it. This is what I do for the for the politics people as well, so we have um just um data and information to talk about, okay? Now, this was a um a secret treaty of alliance between um England and Spain. Okay, so this was a an an alliance between England and Spain. An alliance uh between. Between England and Spain. Now. So we could talk about the Treaty of Bruges as well, okay? And you could even put these two um into one paragraph on its own, if you really wanted to. If you wanted to stick them into and sort of amalgamate them into one paragraph, you could just talk about um international treaties and why. And why they were successful. And including um, when we include this, we could also talk about uh the renewal. The renewal of the Treaty of Etales. Treaty of Etales. Again, this was in fifteen ten. So just um just into our 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 timeframe that we're looking at. So again, the Treaty of Etales is, as we know from Henry the Seventh, was a treaty following um conflict between England and France. England came out of it looking very, very good, and it was renewed in fifteen ten by Henry the Eighth. Now, of course, we all know as well. That um peace with France doesn't necessarily last very long when it, when we're talking about Henry the Eighth, he was kind of obsessed with France for some reason. But for now, fifteen ten, the Treaty of Etales was renewed, okay? Now let's talk about the the field of cloth and gold. Because the field of coffin gold um was p- is probably one of the major things that we can think about, one of the major events that took place. Um early on in Henry's foreign policy. So the field. Of cloth. Of gold. So, field of cloth and gold was a. Uh effectively, this took place in fifteen twenty, let's just add the add the timeframe as well, okay? And. Just trying to get some uh data for everybody here. So the the field of cloth of gold was a general um, was a sort of a royal meeting, you know, was a sort of a summit. Okay, but uh around um Calais, um between between the two kings, okay? So we have Francis of France and then we have Henry the Eighth. Okay, so this was a a a kind of foreign summit. A foreign summit. And a peace summit, you know, as a peaceful one. And it was peaceful. So all of this is evidence of the fact that um foreign policy in these, in these years. Were motivated by a desire for peace within Europe, within, you know, within their, you know, within European neighbours, okay? So, this was between um the seventh and the twenty fourth of June. Um fif- fifteen twenty, so this was just in June fifteen twenty. Okay, and it was generally, you know, it was generally seen as a a a a. A positive force in 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 foreign policy at the time, okay? So, that's one of the things that um we could talk about. Now, the question that I want to ask is. Why might it be considered that the 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 field of cloth and gold wasn't as successful? As it's sort of portrayed? That's one of the questions I want to ask. Why was it not as successful as 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 you, you know, as once portrayed? Because there are reasons to criticize the the field of cloth and gold, okay? It looked good, you know, it was um. Uh you know, it was a very um, it was a quite a a, an equitable meeting between the two, between the two um monarchies. Between the two monarchs. However, what was, what was really achieved at the field of cloth and gold? What was actually achieved? So question is, what? Was actually achieved. Caitlin, yes, it was very expensive, that's the first point, okay? Yeah, well, a- actually, we can add that as well, okay? Okay, so the first thing was it was very expensive. Anyone know how much roughly it cost? Okay, so very expensive. Very expensive. Anybody know how much it cost specifically, if you wanna use some, you know, quite specific evidence? If not, I can tell you. Okay. Well. It was actually, it cost the Henry's Royal Treasury around fifteen thousand. Okay, around fifteen thousand pounds. Which of course in today's money is a lot, never mind back in the fifteen twenty. Um it would have been a lot of money indeed, okay? And when we're talking about up here, what was actually achieved, in reality, very little was actually achieved. It was really just a show, okay? So actually, in reality, uh very little, very little was achieved. Was achieved. Uh with the field of cloth and gold. So that's problematic, really, because, yes, we have this desire for peace within Europe, but at the same time. Um diplomatically, at least diplomatically, um very little was achieved and it was very expensive. So that's one way you can sort of criticize the field of cloth and gold on the other side of the debate, okay? So we've got a number of points that we can look at, we could talk, talk about Wolsey's general um desire to show um that England could become a force. Of diplomacy within within Europe. And we could also talk, and to back that up with evidence, we could talk about the Treaty of London, which was a general. You know, peace treaty, okay? Uh you could also talk about the Treaty of Bruges, uh where uh Henry the Eighth and Charles the Fifth. In August nineteen uh fifteen twenty one um. Created this alliance between England and Spain, again, a general peaceful um settlement there. However, there was some sort of conflict conflicting undertones. And then you could also talk about the Treaty of Etales in fifteen ten, which was renewed. Are there any other points that anybody would like to raise before we move on to look at the other side of the debate? Because we are on track for time. Is there any other points? Cause there are other points, I I can bring up other points if anybody wants to. I just don't wanna spend too long on one side and then not have enough time to look at the other. No? Right, okay then. So let's look at the other side of the debate. So we've got kind of evidence that we can use on this side of the debate, let's have a look at what we could use on the other side of the debate. There we go, right. Yes, it sounds good, yes. Okay, so. The other side of the debate was, you know, it's uh foreign policy that being uh was um not. Um to achieve, to achieve peace. So. I think if anybody was to sit this in an exam, and they saw this question, the first thing they would think about is. Um the, all the conflicts that um was uh that took place. You know, all the conflicting things that happened. So. The first thing I'd like to do is not just come up, list a number of points that show that Henry the Eighth was um, you know, incompetent with. When it comes to trying to achieve peace um in Europe, he obviously wasn't trying to do that. But I would like to also um develop points on this side by trying to critically analyze points on this side, if that makes sense. So I want to argue why some of these points, um while they sound um peaceful on paper, might not necessarily have led to peace. Or might have been, you know, um could have been reversed quite easily, that kind of thing. So, and I wanna begin by looking at the renewal of the Treaty of Etales. Cause I think if I was to write this essay, I would talk about the renewal of the Treaty of Etales, talk about why the Treaty of Etales was very peaceful, okay? It was a peaceful settlement between um Henry the um Seventh and France at the time. And that um a renewal of the Treaty of Etales obviously shows that there is signs of 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 a desire to um maintain peace. However, this was in fifteen ten. In fifteen twelve, okay, in fifteen twelve. There was an invasion of France, okay? So Henry. Henry invaded France. Invaded France. And he did this with uh ten thousand men. With ten thousand men. Now, that doesn't necessarily sound very peaceful to me. If if um, if I was to um, you know, talk about things that are peaceful. Uh I wouldn't uh talk about the invasion of France. And it also implies as well that if we're renewing the Treaty of Etales. Uh which was a general peace settlement, why are we then reversing this two years later to invade France with ten thousand men? Okay? Now, this, as we know. This invasion of France, the first invasion of France, uh with the, by the way, ten thousand men was a substantial amount of people um for the time. Conflicts these days obviously take place with hundreds of thousands of people in some cases, but um back in the fifteen hundreds, this was a very significant amount of people. Okay? And. What's important to note is that this invasion of France did achieve uh very little. So this invasion of France. Invasion of France achieved very little. Achieved very little. Now. What's interesting though, is that that didn't dissuade our our friend Henry, okay? In fact, it just spurred him on, okay? No pun intended, as we'll look about in a minute. It spurred him on to just go and invade himself, okay? Yes, Henry's treaties had very little uh, had very little validity only cloaking his foreign policy. Exactly, exactly. That could be the argument you could use in the in the essay. So when you're making an, when you're writing an essay like this. You want to sort of have an underlying argument that you're trying to prove, and you wanna establish that in in your introduction. You want to um, so in your introduction, you want to outline um what one, you know, on one hand, um this and on the other hand, that. But the most valid interpretation is the interpretation I'm going to argue effectively. And you could use um the argument that Henry just wrote here um to 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 make that argument. You could argue that while these um treaties did seem to be um, you know, were on the surface level um peaceful in nature. They only um sought to cloak his real for foreign policy objectives, which was conquest of France effectively. And and um and more, and more violent means of foreign policy. And that would be a very good argument that you could uh prove very well, because you could list on one hand. All of these um seemingly peaceful treaties and renewal of the Treaty of Etales, we have the Treaty of London, we have peace with, you know, general peace in Europe. We also have the field of cloth of gold, we also have marriage alliances that I haven't even meant, I didn't even bring up the marriage alliances, people like. Um uh marriage uh of of Princess Mary, the who was the sister of Henry the Eighth, all these kind of things. But then say, however, on the other hand, while these are um on the surface, um very peaceful treaties, very peaceful in nature. In reality, okay, when in reality, his foreign policy was a lot more um violent. And a lot more um invasive in nature. And this is what we're gonna look at on this side. So despite the fact that the Treaty of Etales was renewed in fifteen ten, in fifteen twelve, Henry invaded France. And then in fifteen thirteen, he did it again, which is what I'm just um talking about here. So he led, this was his own personal invasion of France. So in fifteen thirteen. In fifteen thirteen, um he, Henry himself, Henry, Henry himself. Invaded France. Now. It's very easy to explain, you know, when you're writing your essay, and you have your point, and you have your evidence, and then you have your explanation. Uh and your analysis, it's very easy to explain why um an invasion of France doesn't show that Henry is um being peaceful. Uh i- in his English foreign policy, okay? Can anybody? Can anybody um comment on the success of this invasion in fifteen thirteen? Was this as, was this more or less successful than the first invasion in fifteen twelve? Can anybody, does anybody know? Um anybody know the answer to that question? Can anybody, does anybody know, um, anybody know the answer to that question? Because he was, I'm basically asking what kind of points, what kind of other pieces of evidence could you, could you mention when we're talking about, um, this invasion of France? There's one specific, um, uh, battle that I would like to, um, to reference. And if anybody doesn't know, I'll, 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 I'll list it out here. Anybody? No? Going once, going twice, alright. So, this invasion of France, um, we have, um, there we go, Battle of Spurs, okay? So we have the Battle of Spurs. Battle of the Spurs. Of the Spurs. And we also have the, um, the capture of Tornai, Tornai Turney, okay, yes. So this was actually a relatively more successful, um, invasion, um, and attack than, than the, than the first one. So the Battle of Spurs, uh, we also have the capture, capture of Tornai. Okay? So this was, um, so this was, um, you know, quite, uh, uh, relatively successful, okay? Now. Again, you can use this as evidence, do you know, that, uh, Henry's invasion of France was, were relatively successful, just adding a little bit more extra evidence into your, into your essay. But this is a single point that we can talk about when we are talking about the in, uh, the first invasions of France, okay? And again, on the other hand, going back to Henry's, um, general argument that we have here, okay? Where he says that the treaties were, um, you know, had very little validity and they just cloaked his foreign policy, his real foreign policy objectives, which I think is a very good argument for this question. You could also bring up the fact that the Field of Cloth and Gold down here, okay, was not only very expensive, okay, it didn't really serve any purpose and, and it was also, nothing was very, really achieved diplomatically. So you could argue, yes, this was a peaceful foreign summit in June fifteen twenty, um, it shows, um, that the foreign, English foreign policy was geared towards trying to, um, ensure a peaceful settlement of European powers. However, in reality, nothing was achieved, uh, in reality, nothing really was achieved diplomatically and it was very expensive. So that's how you could go back and forth on evidence like that of the Field of Cloth of Gold, okay? So we've got the two invasions of France that you could either separate, um, uh, you could separate into, um, two separate, um, paragraphs, or you could just, um, stick into, into one, um, you know, into one, um, big paragraph, okay? What else can we talk about when we're talking about, uh, examples, when we're using examples of evidence, uh, where where English foreign policy was not peaceful? Between the years fifteen oh nine and fifteen twenty-nine specifically. Is there any other examples anybody would like to bring up? Cause I've got a couple more. Just whilst I take a drink. So. Not only, okay, can we talk here, uh, talk about, um, the early, uh, invasions of France, but we could talk about later Anglo-French conflicts as well. So. Don't forget, we are, we are within the timeframe of fifteen oh nine to fifteen twenty-nine, we can talk about the Anglo. Yes, Henry joined Charles in a, a uni- unified attack against, um, I assume you mean, uh, France, yep, there we go. And that gained very little. Yes, that's exactly another point. So let's talk about the Anglo, uh, Anglo-French, uh, conflicts. Anglo-French conflicts of between fifteen twenty-two and fifteen twenty-five. So fifteen. That's a terrible five, fifteen twenty-five, okay? Now, I am conscious of the time, cause we're supposed to only spend about half an hour per question and we're going over by a good five minutes, but, um, there are a couple more, there are a couple more that I would like to talk about, okay? So we've got the Anglo-French conflicts, there's not really much to say about them, okay? We've got the Henry, um, um, taking advantage of Charles the Fifth, really, uh, of the, the defeat of, of Fr- of, of France in the Battle of, um, Pavia, okay? And generally speaking, uh, so we can talk about that. We could also talk about, um, I haven't mentioned yet, uh, Anglo-Scottish conflict. Anglo-Scottish conflict. Which was in fifteen thirteen. Okay, so we have things like the Battle of, uh, the Battle of Foden in fif- in September fifteen thirteen, okay, and again, yes, the Battle of Foden, again, um, again, nothing was really gained from this either. So we have the Battle of, we could talk about the six, yeah, the Battle of Foden, so the Battle of Foden. Oop, let me write it, spell it correctly. But then we could also, the overall historical interpretation is that, again, nothing was really achieved. Nothing was really achieved. And I think overall, generally speaking, the correct, you know, a correct interpretation, a, a valid interpretation that could be had of this question, is that Henry's foreign policy changed depending on what Henry wanted to achieve, okay? So if it was his, um, desire for, or for, for conflict, uh, and for an invasion of France, like he, like he always said, he wanted to be like a warrior king, like, you know, oh, elder, uh, monarchs during the Hundred Years' War. Then that's, then that was something that, um, pushed his foreign policy in that direction, especially later on in, in his, um, in his reign, between, you know, the fifteen forties to the fifteen forty-sevens, where he was almost vehemently obsessed with France and just invasion of France, invasion of France, invasion of France. But you could also talk about other circumstances that depended, uh, on, um, good foreign policy relations, okay? You could talk about the King's Great Matter and the fact that he wanted to secure the annulment of, uh, his marriage with Catherine of Aragon in order to marry, uh, Anne Boleyn. And how that directed his foreign policy too. That's something we haven't really, um, um, touched on very briefly. But I think ultimately, I, I, I very much like, um, Henry's, um, overall argument. I think you could, uh, write a very strong essay on, uh, using the argument that while on the surface, um, there are a number of peaceful, um, activities and things that sought quite inequitable, um, remedies, um, between, um, states in Europe. In reality, that was only a cer- that was only on the surface level. Uh, if we actually look deeper, more, uh, more historically at his underlining, um, desires and other, um, and other things that he did, it was more not to, it wasn't to achieve peace in Europe. It was definitely not the main aim of his English foreign policy between fifteen oh nine and fifteen twenty-nine. In fact, we have got a number of conflicts that we can talk about, okay? We've got a number of points that we can make and we've all made these points together, okay? So we've gone slightly over for this question, but I'm gonna take half an hour, um, for the next question, okay? And I'm just gonna set this, um, I'm just gonna set this, um, back to the, the intro page just before, just whilst I set up the question and then we'll get on to the second question, which will be concerning, uh, Russia. So let's just set this. Okay. Right. I should be back, hang on, yes. Right, so we've got a second question now for the, uh, second part. I thought I'd go, I thought we changed the color up a little bit, it seemed a bit dark with the, uh, with the white backgrounds. You do Nazis for your history, thanks for the live videos. Oh, yes, thank you very much, thank you. Yes, we are gonna do a, a Nazis video as well for history, um. The only thing is that, um, when I put up the poll, um, there were a lot of people who wanted Russia as well. So we're gonna try and eventually cover all of the topics, uh, at some point, um, but yeah, thank you, thank you very much, um, thank you very much. Let's do some Russia questions for those who are still wanting to look at Russia. So. Really, the question we're gonna be asking is how important was unity and organization for Red victory in the Civil War between the years nineteen eighteen and nineteen twenty-one? So what we're being asked is, um, a, a civil war question, something that will apply to the Tsarist and Communist Russia module as well as the, um, Russian Revolution, um, Revolution and Dictation module. And we're being asked to look at the factors and the reasons why, um, the Red Army won, um, the Russian Civil War in nineteen eighteen to nineteen twenty-one. And one of the factors that they have listed, the listed factor that we have to talk about is unity and organization. And we're asked how important that was for this, uh, for this victory. So. The first, again, we can do it on, we can split it onto two sides. We can look at the first half of the argument, which is it was very important, and then we can look at the second part of the argument, which says that it wasn't as important, or that other factors were more important, or just as important, okay? You don't necessarily have to go, um, uh, all or nothing for, for this, for this question. You don't have to necessarily say it wasn't important or it was important. You could talk about why, um, you could talk about why at one, on one hand, it was relatively important, but there were other factors that also contributed, okay? So. What we're gonna do is we're gonna list the first, um, side of the debate, where we're gonna talk about, um, unity and organization being the most important. So it was important. Important. And again, what kind of information, oh my lord, what kind of evidence? Oopsie daisy, it would be good if I could do underline. There we go. Now, what is the kind of evidence that we can talk about? Okay, what kind of evidence can we talk about to suggest that unity and organization was important? Okay. So, unity, unity and organization, uh, were important. And we can talk about this by the first point that I'd like to talk about, which is the ideological, um, the ideological stance. Okay, so why would it be important to talk about how the Reds presented the Civil War? Because the Reds, the Red Army, so we'll just call the Reds, okay, for now. So the Reds, Reds, um, presented, presented the Civil War, okay, as an ideological conflict. As an ideological. As an ideological conflict. I've just remembered as well that I need to, um, put this question into the chat box, so I'm just gonna do that very quickly. Whilst people, uh, whilst I'm putting people in, uh, putting the question in the chat box so people know what we're talking about, um, I asked the question, why is it that they presented it as an ideological conflict? Why do you reckon that promoted unity and organization? How, how does that kind of promote unity and organization compared to the whites? Okay? Nineteen twenty-one. Okay, so when we're talking about the ideological, um, the fact that the Reds, um, presented, um, the Civil War as an ideological conflict, okay? This meant that the, the, the conflict wasn't just a, uh, was more than just any normal conflict, okay? This was a conflict, uh, a conflict, a conflict for the survival of Bolshevism. For the survival. For the survival of Bolshevism. And that's very important. That's a very, um, strong motivating factor for those who are ideologically inclined to be, um, you know, to support Bolshevism. And that's what's important. So, to ask the question, you know, how important was unity and organization? The fact that, um, the Reds was able to present the Civil War as an ideological conflict as, for the fight for the survival of, um, Bolshevism, this instilled unity, um, among the Red Army, okay? This would instill unity. Instill. Instilled unity. Will this be saved afterwards so I can re-watch? Yes, this is always, there are always, um, um, as soon as the, we, we stop going live, it will be published afterwards as well, yes. Um, instilled unity compared uh, to, uh, the White Army, to the whites. So, not only, so not only was there a, a sense of unity within, uh, the Red Army, driven by this, um, you know, this desire to, uh, for the survival of, of Bolshevism and for the, the sort of ideological conflict, but there was also this, um, this unity was also, um, quite significant compared to the White Army. Compared to the, um, to the other conflicts, okay? To the other side of the debate. What other kinds of points can we talk about if we're trying to give evidence that unity, um, that the, the Red Army was unified and organized, um, in order to show, uh, in order to show that this is a, a, a contributing factor to winning the Russian Civil War? What other points could we talk about? I've got two more we could look at. Hello, H H Crew Two. So, we've got two points. Right, okay. So, the first of these two points, uh, the first of these two points, um, could be, um, when we look about, uh, When we look about, uh look at, sorry, the the kind of territory that was being um. That was being. Um that was being occupied by the Red Army. Okay, so we could talk about the territorial unity. So territorial. Territorial unity. Okay. And effectively, the Reds are um dominated a unified territory, okay? They represented, um so they they controlled, they controlled. Okay, uh the most heavily populated. The most heavily populated. Heavily populated. Um and industrially developed, okay? Don't forget as well, plus industrially developed. Industrially developed areas. Oops, I think sliding. Developed. Areas. Okay, now, evidence for why this is the case, how they um control these de- uh developed areas. We could talk about the fact that um in terms of the territory that was controlled. The Reds controlled a territory which contained around seventy million people. Compare this to the White Army, which controlled an area which was around twenty million people. So Reds. Uh seventy million. People. And then we've got the Whites. Controlling an area of about twenty million. People. And so this unified territory that was very um popular population, you know, heavily populated. Um a lot of density, uh H H crew two, what we're doing, we're doing some um A level history questions. The question is in the chat box. Um that are just above um Sam's comment um about how important was unity and organisation? Um for the Red Victory in the Civil War in the years nineteen eighteen to nineteen twenty one. And we're just looking on on the on the one hand, we're looking with. Uh we're starting by looking at why unity was important, okay? And this is one of the reasons. And we're talking about territorial unity, the fact that they controlled a unified territory, which was under the guises of a lot of people. So there was about seventy million people compared to the twenty million people. Um and so that meant, you know, there was a greater pool for um recruitment. So a greater pool of recruitment. Oopsie daisy. Zoom in, zoom in, zoom in. Right. So that meant there was a greater. Recruit. Recruitment uh pool. Okay. And so that gives evidence to suggest that this sort of territorial unity that we have um was a very significant factor. We could also talk about Trotsky. Can anybody make a point about um Leon Trotsky? Is there any points that could be made about Trotsky? Why was Trotsky um a very um important figure? When it comes to um unifying the Red Army? Why was that the case? I'd rather have a better quality, but I'm very sorry that the quality is so low. Let me just check something. Okay. In the meantime, check, uh try and work out why Trotsky. Sorry, why Trotsky was uh an important character, a unifying character. Oh no, the quality's okay. Quality's okay. Right. Okay, so why Trotsky was a a unifying character? Well, one of the reasons why Trotsky was a unified character is because he supplied a unified. A a unified command structure. Okay, so Trotsky was uh was central. Was. Central um to a unified. Red Army Command Structure. Red Army Command. Structure. Why was this important? Well, of course, this led to um greater unity uh within um. Within the Red Army, okay? So he was, um he took trains across the frontline. So he uh travelled. Uh to the frontline. Okay, he gave um rousing speeches, okay? So he um he also um, he also was in uh was um responsible. For the um promotion of 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 Tsarist, um former Tsarist officers. Okay, so uh promoted. Promoted. Former. Uh Tsarist. Officers. Okay. You know, that's very good. These are ways in which Trotsky was a unifying figure, okay? And he also um was unifying in the sense that he was able to. Um uh utilise um and enforce discipline through the Chaker. Okay, so so he enforced. Enforced discipline. Uh through the Chaker. That was another way in which he was able to discipline and unify um. People through um through using the, using disciplinary forces in the Red Army, okay? So these are ways in which you could argue that we have a a unifying, uh why unity and organisation. Were very important for uh Red Victory in the Civil War. These are the reasons why we could talk about that. We could make three main points. Talk about the fact that the Red Army presented the Civil War as an ideological conflict. Okay, the conflict for the survival of Bolshevism and how this instilled um party unity. And this was compared to the Whites, which were very, um they were very disorganised. You could talk about the fact there was territorial unity, the fact that they were able to control the most heavily populated and most industrially developed areas of Russia. Where there were most population. So we have the seventy million people compared to the Whites' twenty million people. This kind of unity um territorially gave them a massive advantage, both in terms of the numbers of people. But also in terms of the industrial developments that they could, uh they could um develop, you know, they could um. Instill within 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 the party, within the army as well. And then you could talk about how the role that Trotsky played in unifying the Red Army and Red Army Command Structure. Okay, you could talk about the fact that he travelled across from front lines and stuff to um. To give rousing speeches and to ensure that the army was um kept in lots of morale. And we could also talk about the fact that he promoted Tsar, former Tsarist officers, the ones that had more command experience. For example, uh in the cases um back with World War One. Of course, don't forget World War One has only just ended when the Civil War begins. And you could also talk about the fact that um discipline was enforced through the Chaker when it comes to the uh Red Army um discipline structure. So let's look at other factors, okay? Oh my lord, let's not do that. Let's look at other factors. I'm trying to draw a straight line, but it's not letting me. Let's get this, let's get this right. There we go. So let's look at other factors um that contribute to the um Civil War uh being. One about unity and organisation, uh that were, sorry, other factors that were um contributing to the victory in the Civil War. So other factors. Other. Factors. Well. Again, there are three main other factors that I would like to talk about. Okay, so we're running ever so slightly over, but we are nearly done, so it's okay. So. We have got um three points I wanna talk about. The first one is that despite the fact that there was um some unity in organisation in some cases, this was not always true. There wasn't always unity in organisation. There wasn't. There wasn't. Always. Unity. Plus organisation. Okay, that's one important thing to know. There wasn't always unity in organisation within the Red Army. And, you know, to support this with kind of evidence, you could talk about the hu- the highest level of the of the structure. The fact that Lenin and Star, um Lenin and Trotsky would often definitely disagree with each other when it came to um decisions about the conflict. So Trotsky. Trotsky and Lenin. Would really agree. Would really agree. About. Uh decisions, um you know, uh administrative decisions within the Civil War, about decisions. Decisions regarding the Civil War. Okay. Now that's important, the fact that. Um the fact that there would be uh on rare occasion, there would be agreements between the two effective leading people when it comes to the Civil War. So there wasn't always this unity in organisation, okay? And you can come up with a number of other examples as well as to why there was uh wasn't as much unity in organisation. And so to suggest that unity and organisation were a, was a key contributing factor um might be, you know, less optimal. It might, there might be other factors that were important, okay? What other factors we could talk about? Well, we could also talk about the fact that. The the victory of the Red Army, okay, couldn't have really happened without the fact that the White Army uh was very, very weak. And had a number of weaknesses. So the White Army. White Army. Had a number. Of weaknesses. And there are many, many points we could um look at when we're talking about the weaknesses of the White Army over the Reds. So we've got the fact that there was, um you know, uh they occupied. Occupied um sparse, you know, uh sparse territory. They occupied less industrial territory. Occupied less industrial. Um territory. We could talk about the fact that they got quite a lot of allied supports and why that's a problem because the fact that. Um they got support from the Allies, the White Army, uh that was just another way in which the Bolsheviks were able to use against them. The kind of propaganda that they could use against them. Um so. Uh allied support. Allied support. Was used against them. Was used against them. Okay, all of these are important factors. Okay. And so this allied intervention um basically allowed the Red Army um to use. Uh their propaganda to talk about how much the Allied wanted them to win. And said therefore the Red Army should really, you know, defeat them because they're trying to, you know, we're trying to defeat foreign influence, okay? Now, there is one more thing I wanna talk about, which led, which um. Brought about positive, um you know, a positive outcome for the Red Army. Um that was not directly related to unity and organisation, other factors. So the Red Army promised a number of things um which the Whites didn't. So red promises. Okay. When we have the. Okay, when we had the Russian Civil War, okay, uh peasantry. The peasantry. Uh acquired lots of new land. Acquired uh new land. And this was obviously part of the ideological um um the ideological struggle of the of the Communist and Socialist Revolution. Where we have um, you know, the acquisition and the seizing of the means of production, okay? And this is what that, what happened, okay? And there was fear amongst the peasantry that the Whites would take that land back. Um so they didn't wanna give this land up. They didn't. Want to. Give this land up. Okay, there were also other promises. There were also other promises. So we have promises obviously of Socialist Revolution that we had. So we have Socialist Revolution. Okay. And we have obviously the controlling of the means of production and all of these different things. And basically a new, a new system to be put into place. And um we also could talk about Lenin's April Thesis as well, where we have the um, where we have the promise. The promise of peace, land and bread. Peace, land and bread. We've already talked about the land aspect. Obviously, the peace aspect when it comes to the um leaving of World War One, which has already happened at this point. So uh ending of World War One. Ending of World War One, okay? Very successful, probably very popular at the same time, and obviously bread, um you know, referring generally to economic prosperity. These are the kinds of promises that the White Army, um the the Whites would struggle to to match. Struggle to do, do you know, to do well against. Because you've got the um the socialists um promising these things. And promising uh and and um ensuring that these, the peasantry would keep the land that they seized the means of production for, okay? And that the Whites could take this back. So the Reds were promising a a better, a better world, a better Russia effectively. And this is very important. Okay, and along with all these other factors, the fact that the the White Army was very weak. That, make it a T. The White Army was very weak, endured, uh occupied very sparse territory, occupied very um, you know, very li- illiteral industrial. Territory. And the whole allied support, the fact that the Allied supported them was something that went against them in the end. And then we could talk about the fact that there wasn't always unity in organisation. So overall, I think your argument should be a good argument for this question. A relat- yeah, a relatively good argument for this question should be that. Despite the fact that unity and organisation was undoubtedly important for Red Victory during the Civil War. Despite the fact that it was undoubtedly important, and you can list the reasons why it was important, uh as we have done here, some of the reasons why it was important. There were still other factors. There were still other factors that led to the Red Victory in the Civil War in the years nineteen eighteen to nineteen twenty one. Things such as. The White Army had a number of weaknesses. And so these weaknesses were being able, you were able to capitalise on these weaknesses in order to secure a victory. And the fact that the Red Army promised a num- a number of things that were. Um not promised by the White Army. These are all other factors that could be used, okay? So we're running ever so slightly over. I'd like to thank everybody for um coming. Um this is um gonna be uploaded live obviously after um. After this has been um done, after I've finished streaming. I I'll do some more um next week, okay? We'll focus on two different subjects. We might do Tudors again. I think a lot of people like the Tudors. Uh we might do Germany, we might do uh British Empire, depending on what people want to see. Um there'll be another video for for politics students, there'll be a video later on um political ideologies, specifically liberalism. And then tomorrow we're gonna do another video on uh on this actually, in fact, on the Russian um revolution, and we're gonna continue on with Stalin. Um and and that's about it. I'd like to thank everybody for for coming, and I'll see everybody next week if. Um uh for for more history.